Make sure it's Wednesday, not Tuesday.
On this side? Start back there? Yeah. All right. We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for February 20th, 2024. If we could get the roll, please.
Delaney. Councilmember Whiting. Councilmember Contreras. Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Lehman.
Here. Item number two, if you want to stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three is not happening tonight?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we will pull item number three off the agenda for another time.
Okay, in its place, I would just like to put out our condolences to the thoughts, prayers and condolences to the neighboring community Burnsville for its tragic loss of two police officers and a fire paramedic. Sad day. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Ms. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are on consent. Is there any changes from staff or council?
Not from staff, sir.
Mr. Delaney.
I'd like to remove 5C3 and 5C4 for some discussion.
And I'll be removing 5A5. Any other changes? The changes?
No.
No.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second?
Second.
Lara, keep my records here, Lara. Motion by Mr. Lara, second by Mr. Delaney. Mr. Reynolds, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for February 20th of 2024. 5A1 are the city council minutes. 5A2 is a monthly financial review for 2024, January 2024, excuse me. 5A3 is an SCMS-C trust application response. 5A4 approves a THC license for JNS Liquors doing business as Southbridge Liquor. 5A6 is a denial and findings of facts for THC licenses. 5A7 approves off-site permits permit for Shakopee Trap Club. 5A8 is a Minnesota Department of Human Services age-friendly Minnesota grant. 5A9 is agreement with RJN regarding its status as former CMA of Sand Venture. 5A10 appoints boards, excuse me, our appointments to boards and commissions. 5B1 is the 2024 Ash Tree Removal Change Order. 5C1 is the purchase of a boat jumping feature for Sand Venture. 5C2 is a contract with Kraus Anderson for CMA services for Sand Venture. 5C5 is the purchases of, purchase of umbrellas from landscape structures for the boardwalk at Sand Venture. And 5D1 are surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. As modified. Item number six, recognition of citizens by the city council on items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak with us on an item not on the agenda, now would be the time to do that. Is there anybody here that would like to talk to us about something that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none. We will move on to number seven, items removed from the agenda. First item that was removed was 5A5 by myself. The reason I removed it is more of an informational. I think it was two, two meetings ago, we asked to clarification on the law and the, specifically, Mr. Whiting's provisional license. And I never received that, I don't know if anybody else did, it fell through the cracks. So I printed it out and I kind of wanted to go over it a little bit and make sure I understand it correctly. So you can, it was discussed on December 6th, '22, carried over to the December 20th meeting of 2022, and it was adopted on consent on that, on the 20th, 20th of December of '22. So basically, the provisional license, it's $1,000 for a regular license. The provisional license is available after, for, the fourth year after a violation of the ordinance.
Is it after the third year and then the fourth year? I guess.
I think it would be, the way I read it would be, so you get a violation, you know, it might be in the middle of the year or something, whatever. Three whole years, and then that fourth year, you would be eligible to apply for the provisional.
Provisional.
Three years after the date of the infraction. So then, on the beginning of the fourth year, yes, sir, then they could provide, or they could apply for provisional license.
Okay.
Do you remember, what, excuse me, was, do you have the fee for the provisional? Is that?
The $5,000.
$5,000.
Yep. And, yeah. If anybody wants a copy of that, I can certainly get you one. It's, it's, you can go back in the records and look it up, it's item 9A2, December 20th. You can have this copy if you like.
Well, thank you.
But, you know, I took this 5A5 off tonight's agenda for a denial of a THC license specifically because they're, they're not eligible for the provisional license. It was in '21 or in '24, so they would not be eligible based on the time of our current ordinance. But the question I ask myself is why would somebody apply for a license knowing that they're not eligible? Or that they're in breach of our ordinance and they're not going to be granted because they're going to be denied because of the ordinance? So apparently, they either, people don't know what the ordinance is. I mean, if it was me, I would wait until I was eligible and apply for the provisional. Mr. Reynolds?
When people apply, they're noted whether or not they're actually available for a license, but that does not stop any group from coming before city council and making a case if they want to, to see if city council will change the ordinance or change it according to them.
Okay.
They're also notified that, about the provisional license and that they can get that provisional license upon the expiration of the three years at an increased fee.
Okay.
I'll comment, I, I think that's working then. If, you know, we're providing a forum so that we're not selling to minors.
Right.
That, there's our, their teeth in our law, it wasn't working before, so.
I couldn't find it, I had to go back through all the records to find it, it's not, at least from outside in as a person at home on a computer looking for it. I don't know.
Was it in the fee schedule or?
I went back to the actual meeting and pulled up the.
It's, Mr. Mayor, it's available on our website under City Code.
Okay.
Just simply do a search, THC, it pops right up.
Pops up, all right. Okay, so 5A5 is before us, I took it off, as I explained, because I wanted to make sure that the information is out there. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to deny a THC license for Shakopee 1997 LLC doing business as Cub Liquor located at 1262 Veerling Drive East.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Councilwoman Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 5C3, it was removed by Councilmember Delaney. Mr. Delaney?
So I had a couple of questions to this one, I'm looking for some clarification of the scope of the contract. I mean, I see that it's $228,000 for a design award. Design award. And I flip over and I look on the next page and as far as 157 of 674, and I see the improvements include updates to interior, exterior, mechanical systems of both buildings, as well as grading, drainage improvements. Additional site improvements include small parking lot, ADA improvements, outdoor gathering space, design landscaping, fence replacement, other site furnishings and definition necessary amenities. So with that, I, again, all this material we received, if I go over to the confluence on page 345 of 674, Schroeder Brick House Preliminary Concept Site Plan. And then again.
Back up, 345 slash six?
Of 674, it's.
Okay.
Several pages in.
355 of 674.
345 of 674.
345. Okay.
That's the Schroeder House Brick House Preliminary Concept Site Plan. So on the, the plan itself has marina parking, gathering lawn, iconic trailhead riverfront trail, historic replica fence, workshop plaza, foundation, trail event lawn, brick house patio, brick house parking lot, historic replica fence, a historic kiln and a gravel interpretive wall. Can I just read that off, anybody watching, to see what we're looking at? So my, my question is scope. Does this design award cover all of what's, I guess, shown on the concept site plan? Or is it partial, or is it in phases? And that's my, I want for discussion is to get that clarification.
Includes everything outlined in the red box here on this site plan. So we've divided this into two projects, there's the, the house, the livery, the space in between the parking lot, and then there would be a future project, which will be the marina and amenities there that will be done in cooperation with the Riverbank Stabilization Program.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as fees go, Confluence is a very small fee because they're just doing, most of the fee is actually going for mechanic electric plumbing and ADA and architecture work for the two buildings.
Thank you.
Mr. Whiting?
You know, I haven't, didn't bring my little historic tour guide books with all the historic sites, or not all of them, all of our historical sites, but several of them are demolished. So here's one we've saved with some great historic assets. In fact, it was built as a showcase for the, the local brick factory. It's on park land, it's a park asset, so I believe we need to fix that up. So I would, we could argue about and debate the uses later, I think that's a great debate, and I'm willing to have it. But I think we need to fix these up, so.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Appreciate the question.
Yeah, one more question, so we have to do something, that was, I agree with your comment, it seems, it sounds like we can't let it fall into even more disrepair, something has to be done at this point, we have to act.
Mayor and council, so the buildings were eligible for the national register, the city put them on the national register. Any federal money that we're using in this area, we'll have to have a section 106 review done. If we don't do anything and we allow them to be more neglected, the advisory council or circ preservation would deem them demolition by neglect by the city, which would jeopardize our $7.8 million that we have coming.
Exactly. And then the grant, yeah.
You want to run that by me one more time? Not sure I heard that last part.
So the, every federal grant has multiple layers of review, one of them is for historic preservation, impact upon historic assets, this is all one property, it was a kiln area. So when we get the federal money eventually from the EPA, the $7.8 million, plus the state also has the same conditions, they're going to look at what impacts that money has on historic structures. We, the city owns these properties, if we demolish them through neglect, that's considered just strict demolition by the advisory council. That's why I included the Secretary of the Interior Standards, so that's what the federal government and the state government use to measure how, when we spend our money, how it's being done.
So $7.8 million, where's that money at?
That is money for the Riverbank stabilization that's coming from the federal government.
So you're saying the Riverbank is historic?
I will. Any federal money used, so a good example would be the bridge in Memorial Park. One of the reasons why that got delayed is they had to do a full section 106 review, even though the Memorial Park was not on the national register, it was deemed eligible for the national register, and if you're using state and federal money on a property that's either adjacent to or near a, and could have some impact on a national register-eligible property, there is a whole long process you have to go through. By restoring these buildings now, using the Secretary of the Interior Standards, we'll be able to skip that step.
So.
So is this strictly park fund, it's not money from the federal or the state?
Mayor and council, that's correct, this is strictly Park Development Fund that's going to fix up the building.
So on the third page, 159 of 674, it's got Confluence for $13,000, SEH for $15,000, $16,000, and Miller Dinwiddie?
Dunwoody.
Dunwoody for $200,000, for a total of $228. Then there could be another expenses of $750, reimbursable. But that only gets you to what their plan would be, that's not any building, anything, that's just for the professional architectural work to figure out what you're going to be bidding and what that's going to cost, and that's estimated to be a little over a million?
So, mayor and council, we did have a preliminary based on the concept plans done, so the house is approximately $623,000, and the livery, livery is about $564,000, so a combined total of $1.1 million.
Okay, Mr. Kirsty, I asked a while back, and never received an answer, and I, I understand people are, have things going on, you had issues going on. Do we know based on, and we don't have a final value, I mean, these things could be low, they could be high, we don't know until we get actual bids. But what are we going to do for park asset on signs and these improvements and building fund revenue? How is that going to work, what that's going to, what's that looks like, what's going to cost? Because that's a general levy impact.
So eventually, when this is, mayor and council, when this is redeveloped down the road, there'll be a park asset charge depending on what it's used for and the life of the building. Typically, on a renovation like this, the building life is probably 40 to 50 years. So they'll take, finance will take that and divide that into the number and come up with a number that'll get charged against park asset for 50 years down the road when something has to be done.
Same with the million dollar signs? On the trail?
So that's a completely separate project, that's actually a $2 million project, but we already have that money set aside, and similarly, the finance department will look at what other cities have used for value on those signs, and they'll divide that out, and then it'll be built into the park asset fund.
Okay, and looking at this list, I suppose we could start at the house. You're just showing the bottom half of the garage, livery, but you've got huge costs for, for plumbing on both projects. HVAC, I, I'm not sure what we're putting in a, a house, which was a, basically a single family home.
Mayor and council, this was strictly done off those sketches that I included in your package, so.
Yeah.
Once we get some real plans, we'll actually put it out to bid, and we'll be back to you with what those real bids are. But the building, it's likely both buildings have to be sprinkled, and that was probably included in the plumbing cost?
All right. Anything else? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize the appropriate staff to execute a contract with Confluence for $228,158, plus $750 for reimbursable expenses for landscape site architectural plans for the Schrader House livery and public improvements.
Second? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Whiting, let me find this on here. Seconded by.
Contreras.
Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. I will say this is much broader than the scope of what I envisioned, and I've said that from get-go, it shouldn't be a surprise. I voted against the Park Master Plan because it was too lofty and expensive, I still believe that. I voted against purchasing this property, we paid $700,000 for it, paid relocation expenses. Today, that building is, according to Scott County, worth $300,000, and we're going to be putting in three times of that into it. And there's no guarantee of any revenue, and the cost to maintain historic property is extremely high, not to mention insurance. At any rate, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes three to two?
Correct.
Item 5C4.
Okay, I pulled this also for the similar, same question, I'm looking at the scope of it, what we're doing, it looks like in this case is a 208K fee for construction award?
Mayor and council, this is for, like hiring a general contractor, we'd be hiring Loffler as our construction manager. So they've already done that preliminary estimate, so they'll work with the architects to fine tune those numbers, so when it goes out to bid, we have some more realistic numbers.
Okay, so what this does, same property, but this is $1.1 million?
Correct. So both, both of these firms are, so that was a price, I believe, from 2022, they're honoring that because they understand this is an important project and they're willing to get it done.
So just to clarify, so we have $228,000 worth of fees on 5C3, and now we have another 208, so we, we basically have $450,000 worth of fees for architects and everything else going into this, construction manager in this case, for a million dollar project, so 50% of the whole total project cost.
So mayor and council, again, it's not really the way to look at it, that, we don't hire general contractors and just tell them to go at it, so this is basically, we buy the services at the cost from the subcontractors, the general contractor's fee is basically that construction manager as agent, so they're working for the city, and basically, most cities have found that it's way more prudent and saves them a lot more money by doing it that way versus going out to bid and.
And, and then I have one more question. Mr. Kirsty, do we have incentives in the construction manager contract for being, finding savings and being underbid, are they financially rewarded for that? Or is there pay based on total project cost?
So mayor and council, Mr. City Attorney just gave me a new draft of sections for our contracts, so all of them are going to be not-to-exceed contracts, so they're not rewarded for bringing it in under budget, and they're not rewarded for having it come in over budget.
Okay.
And I think at River City Center, that was the best example, they ended up working basically for about 45 days for nothing there because they hit their cap and they had underestimated how long it would take and it came out of their pocket.
Okay. Anybody else? Wish as a council? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to award a construction manager as agent to Luffler Construction and authorize the appropriate staff to execute the agreement.
Second?
Second.
By Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Councilor Delaney and myself in a negative. All right, let's see here. Item, oops, item 8A1. Citygate Fire Department Service Evaluation, and before you get started, your presentation is going to be shorter than this, correct? Well, welcome, and.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll give some, some opening comments if you, if you would like. As you know, we did a contract with Citygate to come in and do a in-depth organizational analysis of our fire department after multiple issues of concern has come up over the last year or so. And I thought the best way to kind of introduce this is to think of it as to what we're, what we're thinking about tonight. And we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and many of our neighboring communities have already done a lot of the work that they had, but we had some bigger issues than they did on the leadership side, which I'll get into in a minute. But we know that Prior Lake and Savage, Minnetonka and others are all going through and are have done similar things with their fire department, basically bringing them up to standard. The real issue has always been the paid-on-call model, which is, you know, from, from an administration standpoint, is the best bottom dollar that you can get, and it's a great model. The problem is, the times have changed, people aren't interested in it, even with a good pension, it's not enough to get people to be involved. So what you're seeing is not just us, you're seeing this happening throughout the whole metro area, and frankly, the nation, as I'm sure our consultants will discuss briefly. And from our perspective, we had some leadership challenges as well. So what I'd like you to focus on tonight is the why. They're telling us why we have to do something. Now, we'll talk about the how, and, and they certainly have some ideas on how to do the implementation, but that's going to be a very longer process, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to pay for it. The reality is, is that this is going to be an investment, and it is not cheap, and we need to understand that going into it, as our other communities around us have, 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 have shown. So in talking about the why, I just want to kind of read from the executive summary some of the, the points that were made and that our consultants will certainly get into, but let's talk about challenges and then talk about a positive. And this is directly from the executive summary. Challenge number one, management culture, accountability and quality control. Citygate observed and measured multiple failings of department management, including many programs that were missing, weak or not in compliance with state regulations. The overall management culture generally exemplified ad hoc decisions, favoritism, no quality assurance, no annual operations or training plan, was reactive, and in any, and in many cases was more reflective of a department of 20-plus years ago. Inadequate leadership was most evidenced by very limited policy mandates for training attendance and safety practices not being ingrained or enforced. Citygate further found the dual role career and part-time program fragments, job titles, responsibilities and compensation were several issues likely non-compliant with Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA. Overall, we identified a lack of understanding and compliance with city hall policies, as well as broken relationships and trust with local mutual aid partner agencies who do not believe that quality training and safety programs exist within Shakopee, in, in the Shakopee Department, which could endanger their personnel. Challenge number two, adherence to safety standards, this is relatively quick and easy. Citygate found the department's training program to not be in conformance with recognized industry best practices and Minnesota and federal laws. Challenge number three, adequate staffing and deployment. The current deployment model of four personnel on duty daily at station number one is insufficient to safely and effectively mitigate a moderate, single-family dwelling fire or other moderate incident type with no remaining on-duty personnel or very limited callback personnel for a major or simultaneous incident. There are six to eight part-time firefighters out of 46, performing much more than a fair share of the workload. Positives. Citygate found the department's silent majority desires effective leadership and programs conforming with best practices. As this study was underway and the city and, and as, and the city and as the interim fire chief initiated reforms, many personnel stepped up and immediately helped create solutions without writing for this report. Citygate is very impressed by these individuals and the work accomplished to date, and believes there is strong DNA in the department upon which to reboot the department's culture and programs. This city is in debt to our current interim fire chief, Michael Scott, who has done way more than he was asked to do when he came here, and got involved in something probably more than he had ever suspected. But Mike is getting ready to move on, this is an interim gig, and part of what he wanted to find, finish out was to make sure that this report was on the table, and also that we were well on our way on getting a, a permanent chief. With that, gentlemen, I give it to you, and you can take it from here.
Good evening, mayors, members of the council, and thank you to the city administrator for the introduction. I will brief over that slide a bit more now, given what you've just heard. I don't normally do this, but I'm going to give you 90 seconds about who the talking head is. In many ways, this is a sobering, serious report. In many ways, it's positive and strong, you have strong assets to build upon, I want to balance the two. I want to balance the two. I'm not an academic. I'm Stuart Gary, Public Safety Principal for City Gate Associates based TS in California. We practice across the Western US in all aspects of police, fire and EMS system design. Last October, and I'm not stuttering, was my 48th anniversary in the fire service. I started as a volunteer in high school. I started as a paid call member of a combination fire department. I hired young, rose to the level of chief of department, retired after 32 years in the, in the fire service and started a second, what I thought in the day would be part-time, part-time consulting career. And we've blossomed the workload by doing, only working for government, doing effectiveness, master plan, performance audit studies. And I'm somewhere north of 500 projects. I've also been an elected city council member for five years and was a school board president during the recession. I have sat in your seats. I know what it's like for, quote, the outside expert to say, turn left, turn right, don't do it at your peril. I'm going to try to give you a balanced executive summary tonight of that. The chief and I are here to answer any questions you may have afterwards. And I start our presentations with this because many elected officials, you, you get elected for, trust me, I know, the right reasons. And no one ever sits you down and say, but how is fire services and police regulated? And isn't there just laws that govern all this stuff? In America, no. There are no federal laws or regulations mandating the minimum fire service staffing, response times or outcomes. It is a local control issue. In a don't tread on me, local control environment for 200-plus years, it was left to local communities to protect themselves from fire and choose how to provide ambulance service. Comma, however, in the last 25 years, the safety standards in the fire service promulgated by the federal and state government have exorbitantly increased the cost of fire services to protect the employees and the public they serve. The trucks, the breathing equipment, the protective clothing, the training standards, all have very serious federal teeth and state-level teeth behind them. Minnesota is one of the leading states in the nation to require minimum certifications and competencies for all firefighters, not just voluntary paid call, not just career. If you are a firefighter, you are a firefighter in the state of Minnesota's eyes and you must have all the certifications and qualifications to go into harm's way. That leaves you all in this constructive tension of how do we afford to have the level of fire services may, we may desire, but the checkbook maybe doesn't always provide. Second big takeaway tonight, outcome goals drive deployment. Many times our clients will say, I want a minute off the response time. Well, to what end? We want you to think about end game customer service and we will calculate working backwards from the desired risk outcome, the men and women with the right equipment and the right timeframe to deliver that customer service. The homeowner with the residential fire, the business owner with a small commercial building fire, a truck fire on the highway or, or on a surface street, a small wildland fire, emergency medical. And we've given you advice in the report, how to set outcome-driven goals that then have minutes of performance attached and by that you space out the stations and the equipment to deliver the desired level of customer service. The next thing to remember is many community-desired outcomes, in round words, are to prevent death and permanent impairment where possible from medical emergencies, confined building fires to the room or compartment of origin so they don't spread to the adjoining property. To do that, you need to balance what we call the speed and the weight of the attack. The speed of the attack is a single crew to an everyday common emergency that one crew can handle. Neighborhood-based crews, single patient EMS, two-car minor injury auto accident, dumpster fire up against the side of an apartment building. The weight of the attack is aggregating enough multiple crews quickly enough to keep a serious fire from erupting into greater alarm and catastrophic community or block of origin losses. And so you have this constructive tension. I need people on duty spaced out for fairly quick response to everyday emergencies, but if I thin them out too much, I can't gather the big force up quickly enough to attack that commercial or multifamily residential fire. The city manager in the executive summary that he read has already gone over these topical themes in the PowerPoint, management culture, principally accountability and quality control, adherence to safety and standards, and I'm going to spend more time in this session on adequate staffing and deployment. That's again, speed and weight of the attack over the geography and the risks in Shakopee. We also have found very strong positives. Effective leadership is desired, change is already started, improvements are being embraced and there is a strong support to reboot the culture and the department. So let's talk about risk assessment. Well, what are we protecting with this fire department? We look at risk assessment by understanding what your zoning and community historic development have put values at risk on the ground. That's anything and everything other than vacant land. We look at the hazards likely to impact that should they have an emergency, determine the probability of how frequent that occurs. So things like emergency medical, everyday occurrences in the city, right? House fires a couple of times a month perhaps, auto accidents several times a week. We look at the severity of that outcome. A small, singlepatient EMS emergency is important to the patient and the family. A house fire is important to the house of origin and maybe the three neighbors on three sides. Commercial building fire, major employer, business operating hazardous materials in manufacturing or research and development, much greater cost outcomes if something really goes wrong. So we look at risk by planning zone, six major risks here. Building fire, vegetation, wildland, medical emergencies, hazardous materials releases and spills, technical rescue, that's utility worker unconscious in an underground vault or, or a sewer pipe kind of thing, technical rescue with ropes, people in the water, people through ice, those kinds of non-firefighting rescues. And I just said, in effect, marine incident. The values at risk, so what are your demography to protect? You're in charge of a department that protects in round numbers of 48,000-person resident population. Your build-out estimates rise as high as 65,000 in the years ahead. You're already 51 square miles with 17,000 housing units, another 2,600 or so commercial buildings. You've got 1,200 businesses today with over 26,000 employees. Yes, they're not all on the city limits at once. Yes, COVID has driven many to virtual employment, I get that. But if I'm a business owner and my home office burns or has a catastrophic loss or one of my key employees has a medical emergency, my return on investments endangered if I don't get them the public safety they need in the right timeframe. 41 critical facilities, what's that? Critical infrastructure is what keeps modern society running. Power generation, telecommunications, fresh water, pumping sewage. There's this network of things that have to happen for modern society to function. You've got your great natural resources and of course, the entertainment, your nickname, the entertainment capital of Minnesota. You certainly have recreational fun, thriving enterprises that you want visitors to come to and part of coming to is I feel safe. So we look at impact severity in the study, I'm not going to go through the whole table, but to say one axis is probability, one is severity, and we come up with numerically-driven scores based on quantity and prior frequency from looking at the emergency incidents. And for the two station planning areas, for example, moderate risk for building fire, low risk for vegetation, wildland, high risk for emergency medical because of the high occurrence rate, more numbers on that in a few quick slides. Hazmat tech rescue and marine incidents are moderate risk. They're in enough statistical quantity, the department must be trained and equipped to respond to them, but they're not a weekly event. So let's talk about service demand. Incidents have slowly risen since the slowdown during the COVID shut-in and that affected different clients differently, do not to dwell on that tonight. But coming out of the shut-in phase, the total number of incidents per year is rising. The number of incidents by type, red is fires, relatively stable across the three years. The blue for EMS is increasing as not only EMS calls increase, but, but the police and line of ambulance ask for help from fire on a more frequent basis, more on that in a moment. And then other is those technical rescue, special service type of ad hoc events that the 911 system responds to, but they don't fit into the pigeonhole, it's just a fire or it's just an EMS event. If you look at your instant demand by hour of the day, midnight's on the left and again, midnight's on the right. You have emergency instant demand for fire, not just a line of ambulance, at three in the morning. It rises with the morning rush hour, reaches a peak in, in early to mid-morning, stays pretty much constant through, in your climate zone, late evening, and that's a reflection in our experience here of the longer daylight months and more human activities after work. And then it finally tapers down around sunset, you slow down, rinse, repeat, the cycle. Yes, mayor?
So the question I have with this chart is the peaks that I'm seeing seem to correlate with peak traffic movements?
Yes. So, so it definitely increases as humans start their activity day and then it wobbles some up or down, a little bit of luck. And when I go through the Alina EMS numbers, this is not every EMS call in the city. This graph is the EMS calls fire responded to, and I'll give you the police numbers in a moment. So it's a little, the, the graph's a little noisy based on how often fires pull to EMS, but this graph looks like most every other suburban fire department in the Western US. Get busier with morning rush hours, peak again four, five, six PM, more auto accidents, things go bump, people start athletic activities after work, few more things and then it tapers. And your building fires typically get more serious because they go unnoticed after, during sleeping hours, but you can have a commercial building accident fire any hour, any day of the week. For your staffing, we're concerned about the number of simultaneous incidents. So with just two duty crews and low callback from the part-time force, and callback means I get, I get a pager tone, a cell phone alert and I have to stop my job, stop my daycare, leave whatever and come to the fire station and staff a rig. Nine, rounded up, 10% of the time, if one emergency call is open, two emergency calls end up open. So that means it is not uncommon for the two duty staff crews to be on two separate emergencies, typically midday, and you have nothing left except emergency callback from home or some of the fire inspector career staff will staff a third engine in a pinch, but that also means they're setting aside their work or scheduled appointments during the moment they have to be response-ready. Now let's talk about EMS in the community because you have typical of Minnesota, in this part of the, the nation, a blended system of how many total EMS responses does Alina go to in a recent data year, 3,300. 3,100 of those are in Shakopee and then there's small numbers in the two townships your fire department serves. Statistically insignificant, they're there, you're being helpful. But in 2022, police responded of the 3, 33 or 3,100 in the city, 1,651 times. The historic first responder for EMS in Minnesota, over the decades, has been the beat cop first responder because they were out there and available, you didn't have to wait for volunteers to come from home. Made perfect sense for two generations. But as society got more complex, the availability of paid-on-call volunteers declined and the need for proactive policing increased in a more complicated, I'll say it politely, society. Some of the police departments in your areas, in your region are saying, wait a minute, I need to have some, another first responder go to some of the non-life and death EMS calls. So here, Alina is triaging, police went to 1,600 calls, fire went to 1,785 calls, many of those with police. So what's a police call? Auto accident with injury, police and fire goes. Threat against persons, injury to multiple parties with a criminal intent, police and fire go. Minor heart attack, not immediately life-threatening, fire in Alina would go. And then about a thousand times to what the industry now calls low acuity events, Alina goes by themselves. They don't call for a first responder. They're already taking a proactive step to lower the 911 burden by going on, Johnny fell down on his skateboard and has a badly bruised knee or wrist, I don't even know if it's fractured. I'd like it to be medically checked out, I don't want to drive Johnny to urgent care or the emergency room. Alina hears that and goes, we'll just send the ambulance. Johnny fell down, has an obviously broken forearm, I need a splint and bleeding control. Oh, first responder goes with the ambulance. So a little different numbers there. When we talk about outcomes, timeline is important. And two graphs here, on the left is your time of minutes in survival from the time circulation stops putting oxygen to your brain. Now, people classically say, well, that's a heart attack, that's a cardiac arrest. No, it could be anaphylactic shock, it could be chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, it could be other things that interfere with circulating oxygen to the brain. Your brain lifespan is about 10 minutes or less with, with grossly insufficient oxygen. And on the right side of the graph, from zero on the left, when free burning fire in a typical home room goes into open burning flame, not smoldering in the couch, but free burning flame, releasing heat, most rooms will completely be engulfed in fire in less than 10 minutes. We call that the flashover curve. So the superheated gas from the open flame rises every content in the room to its ignition temperature and immediately the entire room is on fire. And the minute that entire room is engulfed in fire, victims have to self-evacuate or be rescued and the fire is chewing its way into the walls, attic space of the structure. So coincidentally, if you want to intervene to keep small things small, the first responder should be there in 10 minutes or less from the time of 911, your city communication center saying hello, what's your problem? My husband's on the floor turning blue. Johnny lit the trash can on fire in the master bedroom closet, I can't, I can't control it myself. Unattended food on the stove is flashed to the cabinets, come, come quick, come help.
Do you have, or is it the next slide of the fire situation with fire sprinklers?
Not in this, in this slide deck, but you'll see a little sprinkler icon in the upper-left column on the right-hand table. It's small in PowerPoint, it's there in your package. So if the sprinkler stops the fire, success, game over. Most sprinkled occupancies do not have destructive fires unless the automatic suppression system has been tampered with or not maintained. If the sprinkler system works, it stops the one or two sprinkler heads, kills the fire in its tracks. So all the new construction you can get, given state model codes, and the chief can speak further if you'd like to after me on that, certainly helps the next 50 years to control the fire problem. Absolutely. The message is invest in sprinklers and in many states to lower the cost of housing, that's a bitter cost-effective argument. And not every state will even allow residential or apartment sprinklers depending on the state and the local regulations.
Well, the reason I bring it up is because we have a lot of sprinkled commercial properties. And I mean, if, if we're going to look at this, we're going to have to look at both sides. We can't just look at the non-sprinkled because we're going to assume the whole city is not sprinkled and that's just not factually true.
Didn't say it wa, it was, that's correct. But the risks that aren't sprinkled still need have the same time curve to get help there in time to keep it from catastrophically destroying the building. So let's talk about response time. Response time is, we call it total, the industry, total response time from 911 saying hello to wheel stop of the first unit on the scene. So three slices here, the top row, call processing dispatch to 90% of the emergency incidents is a little sluggish at three minutes versus 90, 120 seconds best practice. That's a function of simultaneous calls, dispatch, automation, staffing, peak hours of the day, little bit sluggish, can be worked on and be improved. Without showing travel on this map, but the crew turnout times vary in your department, whether it's a duty crew model, respond from elsewhere model, is the duty crew fully staffed or not, I'm getting in the weeds for a moment, but I'm not showing your crew turnout time, but just the totality of crew notified on scene. So your first unit call to arrival is 11:51, 11 minutes 51 seconds. Best practice in an urban area like this city would be seven and a half minutes from time of call to first unit arrival. That's also a function of travel time because your duty crew engines are largely only from station one in the center of the city. The call could be anywhere in the city and it just takes longer to get to all of the calls. Your first alarm multi-unit or effective response force, the last needed engine should be on scene in eight minutes travel. the last needed engine should be on scene in eight minutes travel. And by time you get your two units, a callback unit and some mutual aid, you're at 20 to 24 minutes to get three, four, five, six crews on the scene of a working fire. And again, that's a function of only standing up, dedicated staff with the part-timers, the duty crews, and hoping that they'll come back from home.
I have a question if you can back up on?
Sure.
So if, if it's seven minutes and 30 seconds for the first unit to get there, and it's 30 seconds later for the second unit to get there? You're saying it should be eight minutes for the second unit to get there?
No, I'm sorry, the way I compressed this slide, I've got two different measures there. The middle row is call to arrival, the bottom row is driving time only. Strictly driving time to get all the multiple units there. So to the eight minutes, you have to add crew turnout time, which is donning protective clothing, getting wheels rolling, or coming from home. So the coming from home or work adds significant quote turnout time from notification, and you have to add the up to three minutes for dispatch lag.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still not understanding that the seven minutes and 30 seconds is a best practice for the first unit to arrive, to get to call and to arrival, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Below that, the eight minutes best practice?
Travel, driving time only.
Well, they had seven minutes and 30 seconds to get there. They were there in 7:30, that's your best practice, so why would we say eight when it's more than 7:30?
Okay, so in the 7:30 is embedded four to five minutes of travel. I didn't, in this, just based on the slide, I didn't show you, in that row, dispatch plus turnout plus travel equals 7:30. I just gave you the beginning and end number. The row below for multiple units, if I'm going to collect three or four units together quickly enough on something serious, just for driving time alone, the national standards and recommendations are eight minutes driving time. From the minute I tell four units to, to start, the last unit only has eight minutes driving time to get there. So I'm showing you a totally different measure on the same slide, I'm sorry. Good point.
Okay, so that, that eight-minute clock starts when the units that are first on-site call for help?
No, it starts with dispatch. No, so a working house fire.
Okay, so now you made it worse for my, my mind because how does the second unit know they need to be, respond in, or not? I mean, they're not going to know until somebody is on-scene saying, you know what? It's, it's, we already got it out, we don't need you.
No, actually, no, not. Your trained dispatchers hearing the type, hearing what they hearing in the phone caller, and the stress of their voice, and maybe the whole board lights up metaphorically, five 911 circuits are up at once, and they're all saying the same thing. The Jones's house is on fire, I see flames from the window. Five to eight units will be launched together immediately. Chief officer, ambulance, fire pumpers, ladder truck, they all go out the door together. So that bottom measure is my last needed crew has eight minutes to get there to 90% of the calls. So that's my weight of attack spacing of stations across the geography. I don't want the stations 10 to 15 minutes apart, I need them about eight minutes apart. So in the compressed PowerPoint, I'm taking several data tables in the report and giving you two different measures. Does that, does that help you, Mayor?
I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now let's look at call to arrival. This is single unit, hello to on-scene. And a common question is, well, how many calls do I get to in 7:30? Not quite the peak of the distribution curve, not quite to 50%. You get to many more, 60, 70%, after 7:30 to nine minutes. And then just due to calls away from the single staff station for the first unit, because you're not sending people from home on a small EMS or small outdoor fire event, you're sending the on-duty duty crew, it takes some time to cross town. So you get to 90% of the, get one unit to 90% of the calls from hello at 11 minutes plus. So it's not that it takes you, and this is, I want the public to understand too, you're not giving everybody 11-minute customer service. You're giving folks closer to a staffed, immediately responding crew faster customer service than someone outside of the Station One core of the city. They just have to wait a few more minutes due to drive time and possibly due to rush hour traffic, boulevard being closed for construction, have to take the long way around this afternoon. So that's the distribution by minute. If you look at the workload by geography, this may not be the best in a PowerPoint, but the red taller bars are locations of incident activity, and I can't use the laser pointer, I bet, on a LCD screen, but Station One there in the center, the higher workload bars and exhibits in the map atlas you report, and up to the northwest of Station One, kind of in between Station One and Station Two, are, are that small, half-square-mile cells of where more workload happens versus other parts of the community. So the more densely populated areas in the core of the historic city have a higher call-for-service demand than you do out on the two wings. And you historically put Station Two out on the left wing, and you have much lighter call-for-service demand today out on the right-hand wing. And then you've got the townships and, and the workload beyond the city limits.
Is this including medicals?
This is all incidents Shakopee Fire went to, so yes, it includes medicals also.
I'm, I'm looking at the big tall red tower in the township. I'm wondering if that's a medical to the Benedictine area? There was a major incident out there that I can't remember?
No, that's qua, this is, this is volume, so this is quantity of separate incidents. So it could be a nursing home out there driving EMS. It could, it could be a youth skateboard park with spills and falls.
169, correct?
Pardon?
Could be 169, major crash.
It could be, it could be.
If it's, well, you know it's multiple incidents.
The, the chief.
It's Benedictine's, that's what.
Which is, oh, senior facility.
That's what I thought.
Not a skateboard park, must have been.
That's where the hill is.
For that, I would pay. The, the, the beauty of this tool is, this is an interactive, three-dimensional Google Earth model. When they see things like that, they can actually fly the model, go into the red bar, pick up a dialog box that tells them exactly how many calls, how many minutes it took the unit to get there, and what kind of calls they were. So your staff has the ability to microanalyze these hotspots of activity. Yep, I pressed the wrong button. There we go. So let's talk about travel time. Let's shift from time of call, hello, to just driving distance. If you look at the prior insurance service office formula, for decades and decades, in urban suburban America, they like to see fire stations spaced within a mile and a half as an extent of their reach. So blue is Station Two, red is Station One. This is the historic mile and a half radius coverage radiating outwards from a fire station. And on your road network due to open space, the way many Minnesota communities allow development in amongst bodies of water and natural open space areas, you don't have a downtown Minneapolis grid street network out here in the burbs. You follow the train with good zoning and sensitivity. The result is it's difficult to serve in short distances. But this is a distance-based model, strictly driving the street, 1.5 miles, stop the color. If however, we turn on an advanced computer model that does time computations and understands time of day, your speed limits, what a fire truck can actually do, now, this is five minutes driving time. And now Station Two, if it were staffed in five minutes, really gets to the eastern city. Station One gets to the core city, excuse me, western city. Station One gets out east, at least on the highway, doesn't get into all of the newer, somewhat newer, less density developed neighborhoods yet. At build-out someday, might you need three stations to have equitable customer service of, let's call it seven and a half, eight minutes for a single unit? Yes, you do. But right now today, later when I talk about staffing, our advice to the city is before you worry about the distribution of stations, your on-duty staffing component to quickly respond and keep small things small is job one. It just is. And I'd rather have well-trained people in a, with a longer travel time show up than under-trained people maybe sort of kind of hopefully show up from home or work in time to help. So let's talk about part-time firefighter staffing. Lot of words on this slide summarized. You have much of the group nowadays with the socioeconomic demands in society, two-income commuter-based society, you name it, a small number actually show up on emergency callback. You go back 10, 20, 30 years, 90-person force, you get 40, 50 people at the drop of a hat. Nowadays, it's tough to see five in less than 11 minutes if they're not already in the fire station. Also on this graph is the number of training hours to meet the Minnesota mandate. So you want on this graph to be a dot in the white zone. You want high callback hours, and you want high compliant training hours. 11, 12 people out of 45, 46. Everybody else in the shaded area doesn't call back as much, maybe work some duty crew time, and has low training attendance. That's the data. Didn't make this up, this is not a value judgment slide. We've got very good records on training hours and callback frequency. So our deployment findings in summary. It would be helpful to the department to guide future city councils and fiscal planning to have adopted outcome-driven response time policy. Your two-station locations today are inadequate. Both stations need internal improvements to meet 24/7 staffing increases should you choose to, to fund that. Your first unit response time is slower for a lot of reasons, but the primary reason is your duty crew, crews only come out of Station One, and they radiate out, and once they hit four or five minutes of reach, everything takes longer. If they have two calls at once, they might not even be coming from Station One. They could be anywhere in the city clearing call number one and going somewhere else halfway across the city to call number two. Your part-time workforce, in our opinion, is at its limits to handle both on-duty scheduling, so the staff has a tremendous burden to maintain a flexible schedule of part-time, on-duty firefighters. And when they don't show up, their career staff on overtime is, after business hours, has to make up the difference where the engine goes unstaffed. And you hope more than a handful come in from home. And we've all heard the term, hope is not a plant, hope is just that. So your callback to urgent emergencies is weak. You also have a convoluted older system, it's time to wind down, of dual roles for rank and pay. And dual role is, I'm now a career staff member under state and federal wage and hour laws, and I'm the boss of some volunteers. But I'm still in the volunteer program and the relief association, and after hours, I'm a volunteer being paid a volunteer stipend, and my boss is a volunteer officer, but I was his boss during the daytime. You have these two systems with a few people living in both worlds. It's time to wind down the duality, your career under wage and hour rules or you're strictly a part-time employee. And there's more on that in this study. Our deployment recommendations, adopt response time goals, convert to regular part-time and career staffing model. Regular part-time as you wind down the relief association that came out of the stipended days to a strictly part-time firefighter, I pay you per hour for pulling duty shifts. And under the most recent interpretations by Minnesota of its own state laws, if you only are paid an hourly wage to work part-time scheduled shifts, you are a part-time employee under Minnesota law, and you must be in the regular career pension system as a part-timer. No more relief association stipended type of historic compensation. We should reform the roles to pay and hours and titles to a singular structure. I just talked about converting the part-time firefighters to the state pension. Can consider this a rebooting. You establish a job description in the city employment schedule for part-time. They resign tonight at, you know, 11:59. I was the old model, and at 12:00 midnight, I'm now a part-time city employee under, under the full personnel rules of the city of Shakopee. And in the state's eyes for compensation, I'm a part-time city employee. Staff each station 24/7, 365, each station eventually with a four firefighter crew. So eventually up to four people on duty on two engines. That's eight total. A typical serious house fire, and I don't mean catastrophic, worst of the worst every five years, but a decent room and contents garage in one room, working house fire where you need command, water supply, utilities, search and rescue, firefighting team and a ventilation team. Any study, any best practice in America says to play that game of football effectively, fast enough, that's a 15-person operation, minimum 15-person operation. The metro send even more than that because they can afford to. What we're suggesting here is eventually grow to aid on duty. If you still get some callback in, or can have part-time people fill a fourth or fifth or sixth seat, great, you got more people on duty. But you also continue to need to grow your mutual aid resources. And on a multi-unit response, send two more heavily-staffed guaranteed Shakopee units with your neighbors to get that force of 15 on the scene. Now, why did I pick four? Because the federal and state safety laws say, and it's in the report, I didn't put it in the slide deck, but I'm going to pause here and say this, to enter a burning building with breathing equipment or any, enter any atmosphere immediately dangerous to life and health, and I'm quoting the federal law, where I have to have breathing equipment, my full protective ensemble, I must go inside in a team of two, and I have to have a team of two outside in the same ensemble ready to rescue me in direct communication if I get in trouble inside. It's called the two-in-two-out law. It's been there for 20 years off the top of my head, 25 years, nothing new. So if I pull up with a three-person crew and it's a working fire and I want to enter the building, I can't do it unless, unless the law has a narrow exception. If Mrs. Smith is standing on the front lawn saying, save my child, they're in the left rear bedroom, go ahead and risk your life. But if there's cars in the driveway, newspaper in the driveway, it's 4:00 AM, and for all you know, that's the second car, and they're on vacation, no one's home, the law says you cannot go in without four people on, on the scene. Well, then when I get, trying to get to four people to ready rescue, the water pump has to be operated by a rated, the driver engineer also operates the water pump. Someone has to do that, those skills. And then I need somebody in command to talk to dispatch, tell the interior crew what to do, tell the second, third, fourth arriving units what to do, tell the Alina EMS, there's a patient over on the side lawn with blah blah injury. You need somebody in charge who's controlling under the safety regs the chaos. And that person needs to be certified and qualified in the eyes of Minnesota law. They just can't be whoever raises their hand and says, I want to put on a white shirt and be a, be an incident commander at an emergency. If you could get to two, four-person crews, either as two-in, two-out compliant, it gets you halfway to an effective first alarm in a city that doesn't every week have serious building fires. To us, it gives you a balanced approach that's more cost-effective in the near-term years. And then your economic and risk mileage will vary as you continue to evolve as a really nice city. Fire administration programs, in, in summary. As already mentioned, the training program lacked rigor, an annual schedule, and accountability. The training did not come close in record-keeping, and we believe subjects and interviewing personnel, to being in balance with the state's 11 core elements. Data Minnesota mandates credential firefighters have annual training on what they call the 11 core elements. Chief Scott can update you on the significant changes after I'm done. Since December 23, when both Chief Scott and our team opened up this issue and said, we need to take action now to start to reform training. The current administration staff is at or over workload capacity. No current or comprehensive policies and procedures, especially the cities are followed. You go interview even newer career employees, you interview many of the part-time employees. What's the city? What do you mean I have city personnel rules? What do you mean I have obligations as an agent of the city? They've flown in an isolation chamber almost for years, just doing it their way, which largely worked, largely worked. Was it in lockstep concert with any other city agency? Not necessarily. Fire prevention workload is at capacity due to growth in command post-COVID. And as you know, you also do the important residential inspections. But you've got new buildings springing up and you've got a restaurant opening that needs a hood-andduct inspection or a fire sprinkler, raw piping sign-off back to sprinklers. All of those take plan check, they take inspection, and they take human capital to deliver that customer service, especially when time is money to the contractor. They've got a timeline, they've got a construction loan. And if I want to put wallboard up tomorrow, I need a fire inspector to meet their scheduled appointment today to inspect the raw piping before I cover it up with sheet rock. So there's a time synergy to construction projects that fire prevention has to meet. You also need a succession plan for fire chief, deputy fire chiefs, and fire marshal. They're all getting to the point where they can see the end versus being in the beginning or the middle. And you don't grow competencies by hiring on as an entry-level firefighter and being a chief in five years. Just like in the military, you gain competency through experience, career rungs, more education, time and grade, and mentoring and training. So our fire administration staffing recommendations, four full-time positions. Fire chief today, I guess a recommendation has got ahead of myself looking at the clock. Fire chief today, fire chief, assistant chief, and admin captain, fire marshal, four people. Three of those four are also part-time dual-role employees because they've recently hired and come in or were allowed to stay in the other world of that foot in both worlds. Immediate improvements and starting with this budget, I'll go through a table in a moment. Reclassify the assistant chief and the captain to two deputy chiefs. You have three leadership positions already funded in the current budget, and we're recommending you reprioritize how you spend those dollars you've already authorized. Desperately need an admin assistant. You have expensive chief officers doing office support professional work for themselves. Phones, filing, electronic record-keeping, you know, customer service inquiries. They need to be managing, supervising, designing, training programs. Oversight and measuring effectiveness of training program, going on-scene on emergencies as incident commanders, not doing office support professional work. One position there is a very modest addition. And I've already mentioned, use the current twenty-four budget to be three fire captains for twenty-four-seven crew supervision. So if I had a career fire captain, one a day on a twenty-four-hour shift, I have better leadership and continuity than the rotation crews today. So when you think about it, if I have three part-timers show up by varying splits of the workday, they don't bid as a crew. They're not steward's crew that always works together seven times a month. They filled out a CHIT and said, "I'm going to work Thursday afternoon." Well, the company officer, the captain, and the engineer, they may not have worked with them for seven weeks, if ever. They could be total strangers to each other. Well, how do you have training and quality control competency when no one really has a supervisor and any continuity of the older members mentoring the newer members entering the workforce? Yes, you fill out roster slots. Is it an effective way to run the railroad? No. My analogy would be if I were playing football, I wouldn't want to have some volunteers show up on defense and say, "Hey, four of you know how to play defense. Would you fill in this afternoon?" You know, against the Vikings. What's going to happen? The Vikings will eat your lunch. And that's fire and fire attack. If I didn't say it before, I'm going to say this again. Free burning fire, open flame in a room doubles in size every minute. It doubles in size every minute. It is no joke, I'm not exaggerating, to say, open flames can get an entire room engulfed in fire in anywhere from four minutes, if it's an overcrowded room full of combustibles, to eight to ten minutes with normal family furnishings, bedding, et cetera. Fire really starts to grow itself. And then over time, add two firefighters to improve stability to the part-time staffing situation. So our multi-year recommendations center around three themes: standards, safety, and accountability. You would have in the more permanent org chart, a fire chief, two deputy chiefs, one told to handle training, one told to handle all the administrative functions of the department, recruiting, hiring, promoting, facilities, fleet, all that business-side work. The fire marshal and fire inspector, administrative assistant, stop dual-role employment. And then ultimately grow your crews to be a one-fire captain per crew per day, battalion chiefs at the end game for command and supervision, one per duty platoon, it takes three of those. Your final force that build out in four to five years could would be eighteen career firefighters, six fire captains, three battalion chiefs, and a smaller force of trained part-time firefighters capable of some assigned shift coverage and robust emergency callback. And you whittle down to folks who really have the life situation for emergency callback or to regularly work part-time shift assignments. And those still exist, and you should ride that that program for as long as it's viable and economically cost-effective. I would submit today, and we didn't run the math here, we have in other agencies, by time you, if you attrited fifty people to, let's say, twenty, I'm saving on protective clothing, training, and oversight burden of all those part-timers. And some of those cost savings offset the cost of employment for the full-time. So here's what it looks like in words and art suggested timeline. Twenty-twenty-four, convert the two deputy chiefs, add the admin assistant with a budget modification, I'll give you numbers in a moment. Add the three fire captains and two firefighters. Also, you could apply for a federal firefighting safer grant for in twenty-twenty-five, add a fire inspector to back up the the fire marshal. Add three fire captains and six firefighters, which would then open Station Two with a minimum crew every day. So now I've got to a just distributed two crews out of my two existing stations. Yes, you've got some remodeling work to do inside. I'm not dismissive of that. Going to take time and a few dollars. Twenty-twenty-six, add six firefighters, bringing the total career line up to twenty-four across three shifts. Because remember, twenty-four on, twenty-four off, it takes three rotating duty platoons to get twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five coverage. And by twenty-twenty-seven, add three battalion chiefs. How are we doing chief officer coverage today? The three chief officers after hours have to take coverage from home. You always have to have a certified incident commander available. And right now, your interim obviously lives outside the city. But you are constrained by needing, under national best practices and safety regulations, an incident commander on scene in a reasonable number of minutes. Not catch-as-catch-can if they happen to be available. And you catch them away from their emergency vehicle because they're at, you know, the daughter's volleyball game in high school. Pick a reason. There's valid reasons to have work-life balance and some time off and not work a forty-hour week and be on call a third of the month, evenings and weekends, ready to drop whatever I'm doing and return to work. So the phasing in fiscal year, it's a little hard on the big slide. I know you've got your monitor. So there in twenty-twenty-four, the total career would increase to fourteen with the added personnel at headquarters, revamping the money that was spent for battalion chiefs to captains, add two firefighters. The finance director and I and Chief Scott estimated by time you did those movements and looked at net-net cost increases, it's forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand dollars, rounded off. Not not a major modification to twenty-four. Step two in twenty-five is a major modification. You're going to add another headquarters person, the fire inspector, three more captains to get Station Two open, six firefighters to get Station Two open. So you've added ten career personnel, and it's going to cost you a million a year. No way around it. I can't sugarcoat. That's a that's a serious number. Step three, add six more firefighters, another half-million dollars, five hundred and two K in today's dollars, not inflated, not future labor, cost-of-living settlements, today's dollars just extended. And in step four in twenty-seven, the three battalion chiefs at a net cost of one hundred and twenty-one thousand. So that's how the phasing could look and what the conceptual finance department-driven numbers are right now. These are not just loose City Gate estimations. In conclusion, our recommendations to operate a robust professional department meeting your risks and desired outcomes. If you want an all-part-time fire company with one crew, maybe on duty, and hopefully people coming from home, that is your policy choice. And if you want to field up to eight people on two crews spread out across two stations, that's a policy choice and a conversation to have with your taxpayers. Quality training to state standards must be done. Want to be unequivocal about that. And has to be measured for accountability. Improve timely deployment staffing, that's back to hiring a small amount of career staff to fill in the gaps. Be reliable and be resilient. Two things there. Reliable means they are on duty and resilient means I have just enough to cover if I have an occasional injury. Right? Firefighters do get hurt. I mean, minor injuries, but you know, I need I need knee surgery. I'm off for a month in rehab, right? Well, who takes my shift? Well, I've given you just enough career that you can do some overtime and maneuvering and part-time use to keep to keep the staffing afloat. Increase coordinated regional multi-unit response. Your mutual aid agreements can be strengthened and improved. Maintain and improve two stations as needed. Support robust. Fire prevention, I'm glad, Mayor, you mentioned sprinklers. Fire prevention, sprinklers, public education, residential inspections, anything you need to do, obviously prevents things from occurring. And the more you can prevent things from occurring, that weight of force you're paying to be standing by every day is less. You're balancing the equation with high prevention, quality-of-life services, and a more modest immediate to respond force. You also need to limit your risk exposure and mandated training by not doing every type of special incident response. And sometimes you've been too charitable to your neighbors because you step forward and say, "We've got Shakopee commitment. We're going to do dive team, or we're going to do hazmat or tech rescue, and we're going to be the lead agency among our partners." That's okay if your core mission is professional, exquisite, and to standards. You don't do dive rescues every day. You don't necessarily go to hazmat spills that need moon suits with breathing equipment to enter the toxic spill to start mitigation. Be really, really good at basic firefighting, tech rescue to state standards, and then say, "Do we have the bandwidth in the budget or the reimbursement stream to do some special things for our neighbors?" And that's a challenge in every small department with respect and affection because every firefighter wants to do everything. That's just the way we have our DNA. We're helpers. Hey, buy us another couple of tools. We'll go do that, too, in our spare time. They don't stop to ponder the training and safety burden to really be competent on something they might only touch once every couple of years. So what do you do to stopgap? Well, I have to train more. My muscle memory has to be up because I don't play every Sunday. And they play every Sunday and practice every week, right? To get that muscle memory, not just the fitness, so without thinking they can execute. If I'm going into a burning building or doing a technical auto extrication with cutting and spreading tools on a high-tech, high-energy, modern vehicle, I've really got to have my brain in gear and in sync with my hands. Because if I cut wrong, if I spread wrong, if I damage the high-voltage system or an airbag system, I've made the mess worse for the patient and my own personal self or the crew. Training matters. Next steps in the near term, the lot tonight to discuss, review, and absorb the content and our findings. Consider adopting revised performance measures. You could ask staff to return with costs and phasing to discuss, given the council's final policy direction, and identify the funding to begin phasing and an implementation plan. Longer term, consider applying for federal firefighter staffing grants. Those run typically three years. It's a cost share, very beneficial to the city if you get one, but at the end of the grant, you're expected to put them full-time on the payroll. It's not like you keep getting grants forever and get free people forever. It's a bridging solution to grow an agency. Identify funding for the internal repairs and modifications to the two stations. Work with the other local departments and the sheriff's office to improve nine-one-one work center performance for serious emergencies. I misspoke earlier here. I was with another agency this morning. I said, "Your police nine-one-one center." Here it's the sheriff. And the county center is the sluggish one, not your local PD. So I apologize to having my brain in two clients today, but that was this morning. This afternoon, your numbers are sluggish because it's the regional center. And all regional centers like EMS post-COVID are also having staffing challenges. Dispatching is a very mentally, emotionally tough job. And not everyone's suited for the high-intensity activity of listening, managing with computer interfaces when seconds matter and someone's put a performance clock on them saying, "Handle ninety percent of the emergency transactions in ninety to one hundred and twenty seconds, and we're going to listen to your tapes, we're going to give you quality oversight, and we're going to coach you up to perform at the rock star level." That's not for everybody that walks in off the street, just like being a cop, a firefighter, or an ambulance attendant. So they have recruiting challenges. I'm not trying to throw the sheriff's department in the bus. Most of the regional centers we work with have the same challenges right now. But still, hope is not a plan. What can we do to improve timeliness? And then monitor response performance. So if you adopt council-driven performance measures, the beginning of every budget discussion when you get to the fire chapter is, "Chief, future chief, how are we doing? We meeting our marks? Are we delivering the customer service and the risk and the fire prevention goals we set forth as a council?" Oh, we're not. Why not? Is it cost-effective to close the gap? Is that a goal we want to strive for? Or do you want to maybe temper a goal? But if you just adopt budget numbers with no performance measures, what are you purchasing on behalf of the community? You're buying something, but you don't know how well it performs if you don't have measures to hold it accountable to. So that's why the Commission on Fire Accreditation, the National Fire Protection Association, and consultants like me always stress, if you're going to make smart investment, you have to have smart measures to match the two. And remember, Slide one, it's local choice. You have the measures you want to write the checks to protect the community with. The ball's in your court. Thank you very much for the attention. Appreciate the the questions and discussions, and the chief and I are here, and the time is yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? I'm sensing everybody would prefer just to take the big packet that we have and let it sink in over a period of time. And go ahead, Jay.
I don't want this to get dusty on a shelf, though. We have an interim fire chief, done a great job. Thank you for that. But we have a new fire chief that's going to be coming in. There's some things in here that you've said that some of the staff has already grabbed a hold of and started running with. And hopefully, it's that training module, and at least we can get the training up to snuff and up to spec as a starter and then develop where we want to move forward with some of these recommendations. And I think Mr. Reynolds wants to mention something first.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Essentially, my plan of action is to start moving forward with the twenty-twenty-four implementation, bring that forward. That's a relatively low cost for, you know, a great start. We're going to put in for the safer grant. Obviously, we'd love to get the safer grant. If not, we've got to have a larger discussion about, you know, a larger impact on the levy in twenty-twenty-five. But let's focus on twenty-twenty-four. We know we've got to get a chief in, you know, and that chief will be responsible for moving the plan forward.
And we had three positions that are recommended to be a little modified.
Yes.
We have some budget flexibility.
And that's what we'll use for the machinations to get us to the twenty-twenty-four with just under fifty thousand as a cost.
Thank you.
I'll be with you in one minute, there, Counselor Delaney. The one area that bothers me, and it has for many years, is whenever we look at our call loads, the majority of our calls, both police and fire, is one sixty-nine and a very short stretch running through Shakopee. And I know it skews a lot of numbers, but it's still there. And, you know, you can't get the state patrol to do their job on their state highway because they don't want to pay for it either. One idea I had that I brought up to staff a while back was, you know, we need to have a signed area of, you know, this is an active accident reduction site. We've tried working with the state on that. There's some areas of that road in the winter time that are just not designed for it, too open, too much drifting, too much ice, whatever. But we could make a substantial impact just by having that stretch call load reduced. And in order to do that... And in order to do that, we need to have the drivers driving with common sense, which granted, it's a tall task, you know, and I don't like to see that skew the numbers, but it does substantially. You know, we just looked at our police report calls, the highest call load for the last 10 years that I can recall, always 169, always. And then I'm sure there are more fire calls, too.
I can comment. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Delaney was next.
My initial general question. How close are we getting to a new fire chief? How's that search going?
Yeah, we have it on the street. When is it going to be?
March 4th, I believe it closes.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I've had this for, it was emailed to me. Give you credit for that, but these eyes are not reading it over a computer. So I've had this for three days. I didn't read the whole thing. I did read the executive summary, and I kind of paged through it. It's something that I'm going to be reading more in detail. I'm certainly not rushing into any decisions tonight. I'm going to sit back and actually read this and think through it, and I think we need to talk with whoever's hired as a fire chief. Try to have that person involved in the process, too. Mr. Lara?
I think also, I think it would be appropriate to even set up a workshop with something this magnitude. A workshop session would be appropriate.
Yes, it would. We should probably have a new fire chief for that workshop also. Jay?
I would add that in that workshop, we talk about some of these measures that the council can take. This is stuff that we had no idea as a council was going on, and how would we? Unless we had some measures and some things to say, all right, well, here's our goals. Where are we at on our training? I think that's something we should be able to ask. Is everybody at the training level? And who's over, or where are we at over? And some of the other response time measures, and of course, what you were talking about, if I can jump on that, was some of our specific incidents. And we can talk about the fence along the cliff or the ambulance in the valley kind of discussions, but right here, we're kind of looking at more broader pictures, and we're not drilling down specifically.
I disagree. I disagree with that comment, and I'll tell you why. And I think the consultant that did the presentation made it pretty clear because he kept saying it over and over again. It's something you didn't want us to miss, obviously. And that is, there's state requirements for training that's not taking place, and that's probably the highest priority at this point, right now, in my mind.
Right.
But, you know, there's a lot of pieces that have to come together. This is a jigsaw puzzle because do you take current paid-on-call folks and try to train them up to that level if they're not interested in being in a full-time position? Waste of time and effort, correct? So there's a lot more pieces to this that we have to dive into. Mr. Reynolds?
This is the why. And as I said when I started, we've got a lot of work ahead of us on the how and the how much and everything else.
Well, the why is not, on the training front, that's a requirement. It's not a if you want to. The why is, why do we want to do this? That's not mandated.
No, 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 no. It's why we need to do this, and there are things that we have to do.
But it's not mandated like training is.
We're already, Chief, can you help out on the training, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. So since December, I'm extremely proud of our crews. Dave Giddings, who's one of our part-time deputy chiefs, full-time firefighter, has stepped up and taken on the interim, we have a lot of intrums in the fire department, role of training officer. He, along with many of the fire staff, have really stepped up. And in the last eight weeks, we've done a complete 180 on the training program. We are meeting state standards. We have started a lot of different programs, both virtual programs, the firefighters can go online and do some training. Tonight, when we were walking through the station, the on-duty crew was doing a video training with the on-duty officer. There are the 11 core elements that was mentioned in the presentation. Moving forward, we have a great, robust training program in place. I'm extremely, extremely proud of the firefighters, how they stepped up for this. I wouldn't be as concerned about training. You still need to check in on training, and definitely the new fire chief and the deputy chief, Joe Simons, here tonight, I mean, they are on top of it. They are doing a great job. They've taken it very serious, both for the firefighting portion and for EMTs, because most of our firefighters are EMTs, emergency medical technicians, which is one step below medic. And there's national standards for that. So we have taken great strides on training. As soon as we were made aware of it, with City Gate in December, and I spoke to the city administrator about some ideas and was given the green light to move forward, and we have. We've moved forward and big time. So I'm really, really happy with that. Can I just make one comment on the fire sprinklers, just real quick? Fire deaths occur in single-family homes. There are no fire sprinklers in single-family homes, and it's three units or more are required in the state of Minnesota. So there's still a lot of, you know, you're high-risk for fire deaths or fire injuries in the city that are being built that don't have sprinklers because they're not required. And even in buildings of 4,500 square feet or less, there's not fire sprinklers. So even though it's a great program where large commercial buildings have them, apartment buildings have them, there's still a lot of structures that don't have them and won't have them. So, and that's where our high risks are for fire deaths.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you. Just wanted to say, lots of, lots to say, actually. Tons of moving parts in everything as we think of one thing and another. But as I'm thinking, I'm sitting here, very ingrained in my head is, as city, we put out fires, we catch bad people, and we plow streets. And we're growing. Every day, we're growing. And as we see here, our one working station is on that side, and we're growing that way. So immediately in my head is like, yes, I know it's going to, I mean, the bottom line is money, but we need to get that second station working. How are we going to do it? We'll have those workshops. We'll talk about it, and we'll figure it out. But we do have to, and like, one of our counselors said, we are not going to let this sit and let it collect dust. And like Mr. Reynolds said, we'll start working on it as soon as possible. And before I forget and not let, not forget about those who did step up, like it says in the report, and immediately helped to create those solutions without waiting for this report. So thank you, and you, and you know who have done this work and who are actually taking those trainings immediately now. So we'll work on this.
You have a lot of very proud people on your fire department, and they want to do the right things, given the opportunity to do the right things. On the call volume that you mentioned, council member, EMS calls, medical calls, there is a crisis in Minnesota and probably across the nation right now of a shortage of people that want to be paramedics. So Alina, our ambulance service, they're going to have further and further delays in response time because they can't find paramedics. And they're going down to BLS units, which is two EMTs, which is, again, what firefighters are trained at. You're very, very fortunate in Shakopee that you have probably one of the best-trained police departments I've seen, where all their police officers are, just about all of them are EMRs, which is a emergency first responder. That's unheard of for a police department to do that. So, you know, hats off to the chief for making sure that that program is taking place because they do an outstanding job at medicals. But there is going to be a continued delay until we get ambulances here in Shakopee. EMS calls are growing a lot. You guys seen the red tall stats. I mean, every senior facility, which, thank God, we need them because we're all getting older, and we're going to get in there someday, hopefully, right? But those are call volumes for us, and they're not, you know, a lot of times, they're not significant calls. They're lift assists, breathing issues, and sometimes they are significant calls. But it requires a response from our community. It's our citizens. And if Alina can't get there quickly, my feeling is, as the fire chief is, we, as a community, need to provide a professional service. And the person that's needing the help doesn't care if it's Alina. They don't care if it's a police officer. They don't care if it's a firefighter. They called 911. They want somebody to show up. Police department's getting busier. We can't tie up the officers at some of these calls. So it's a natural thing as you start to hire more full-time firefighters that the fire department goes to more medicals with the police department. Because the police department's still going to be out in the community. They're still going to get there quicker than us a lot of times because they're out and about patrolling. They drive a lot faster vehicles. Right, Chief Tate? So, but EMS calls, you know, fires are one thing, but EMS calls are going to continue to grow. They're going in every community, and that's something you really need to be aware of. Alina does a great job, but they are very honest with us about the increased response time because of staff shortages. So that's something to be aware of. And then my other comment on this, you know, one of the reasons that you guys hired me was my experience at Egan. Don't do what we did in Egan and get this and sit on it until that fire occurs where you're on the front page of the paper. Because that's what it took us in Egan to finally move. Don't do that.
Got it. Thank you.
The other question I had is the HR issue, transferring from the relief association to the part-time, is that going to be a rub or work? How is that going to be handled?
No, I don't think it'll be a rub at all. Matter of fact, the relief at this point is basically said they're ready. There are a lot of benefits to it. For one, if you're currently in the relief and you no longer want to be a firefighter, you then are vested immediately. And then even better, if you do, you're coming in as a part-time employee. Your part-time salary is going to come up. It's not going to be the $18 or whatever an hour you're getting as a paid-on-call, but then you're also getting para benefits as well. So it really is a win-win for almost everyone that would be involved.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Reynolds, that's correct. And to expand on that, we had a meeting last night. The relief association and the members are anxious. They want to move forward with dissolving of the relief association for the reasons that Mr. Reynolds just stated. You know, their other option that they're looking at is going to 10-year vesting. So they want to know what kind of direction from the city soon because there is a time period on that. You have to give at least eight months' notice if you're going to dissolve a relief association. And then it occurs at the end of the year. There's two state statutes. I'm sure our city attorney can brief you more on those as he looks at those, but we experienced that in Egan. So there's lots of different things that we have to meet. So that one's probably more time important than some of the other ones.
A 2024 concern, though? Is that something we're going to do?
In my opinion, is that we should be doing that sooner than later. And, you know, I'd love to be part of that because I experienced it in Egan. And I think there's a couple of part-time firefighters here tonight. But I think that I'm very fair to say that the membership is ready to move forward with that dissolution. It's not going to be something that's out of the blue. We've been really open and honest about the benefits of that. You know, and it seems like the staff's really excited to move forward with that.
But they can still hold the dance, right?
I'm sorry?
They can still hold the dance, right?
Yeah, we can still hold the dance. Yep.
And I pledge to the relief that, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to ensure that everyone's taken care of as part of that process. And also, you know, we could do the 10-year vesting without a problem, get that done, and then, you know, move forward with the dissolution then, you know, relatively soon after that as well. So it's like everything else that we're talking about here. This is going to be a process as we move along.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, guys. Item 9A, city bill list. Anybody?
No questions.
Me neither.
Liaison reports, which end did we start with last time?
Well, we'll start on this end.
All right.
All right. From my liaison, or no liaison activity, I did attend, though, the police swearing-in. Our two newest officers on the 12th of February. Always good to attend those. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Contreras?
Same thing. I didn't have any liaisons, but I did also attend the swear-ins, and that was really nice to see. And to see one of our officers have his daughter pin the badge on him.
That was pretty cool.
That was pretty cool. Thank you.
Mr. Whitey?
Again, no liaison reports. Missed the swearing-in. I was too busy. Sorry about that. I did attend the Lions Ice Golf event, where several in the room may have come away with some prizes, may or may not have. But thank you for attending and investing in a group that...
Ice golf without ice, right?
We did. We managed in the mud. I think they handled it. They had bonfires in the parking lot and a lot of fun and some bands and some money raised for our community. So thank you to them.
Awesome.
As far as Spud Commission report, no meeting since last council meeting. We did appoint two commissioners as openings that we approved tonight. 169 Coalition, our current chair, Terry Moore, stepped down due to personal reasons. I'm currently acting chair until the next officers' meeting. Will we either make this official the vote or get a new chair? We also visited the Capitol to thank Senator Pratt, Senator Port, Representative Bigberg, Representative Tackey for their ongoing support. We also talked over setting new priorities over the next year. Goal of setting new priorities would be to establish, get those established before the next legislative period kicks off next year. Taking the same approach as one of the other coalition organizations by hiring a contractor to reach out to the membership and other stakeholders, put together a summary based on their feedback, and also try to get that, at least look at other organizations and try to get some things overlap so we're not all asking for different things at one time, but trying to get more leverage behind priorities. Trying to grow our membership, north and south. That's also another priority. As far as community outreach, did attend the first session of our emergency management training down at the RTF. Also attended the Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition meeting. We talked about Highway 5, 212, on legislative update. Did do two Board of Appeal, planning commission positions got filled, officers swearing in also, which is always good to go to. League of Minnesota training, attended that with our counselors. That was, I thought the best part of that was the communication session. That was really informative. They looked at St. Paul as an example from a 2016 issue that happened there. Everybody, there's caucus coming up on 27th February, so make sure you take advantage of that. If you want to know your locations, go look on the website for the state. It's a great way to get involved in the community. And also just throwing a plug out there, Benedictine Resident Meeting is coming up next week. So if you want to go visit and talk, make sure you just get on their roster there. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Thursday, February 8th, I met with Commissioner Brennan, Shakopee representative on Scott County at the courthouse, had a good, just in general, conversation about everything under the sun. February 12th, police swearing-in, 13th, board interviews, 14th, RTF emergency training, 15th, there were some more board interviews. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, as you might remember, we had our Affordable Housing Workshop scheduled, and then we had to cancel it due to the conflict of caucus night, March. So let's get a date in March, and I'll send out an email tomorrow, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up. Normally, we would do it on an off Tuesday. We'll start with that and then see if we can't find a time that works for, or a date that works for everyone. But just FYI on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Number 12, or 10, other business? Number 11, and whoever makes that motion, please use the state statute as... Mr. Lara?
I make a motion to move to closed session to discuss labor negotiations according to Minnesota statutes, 13D.03 subdivision B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lara, seconded by Counselor Contreras. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We will be moving into closed session. Thank you, sir. City council reconvenes coming out of closed session. Next on the agenda would be item 12A, Public Works Contract. Mr. Whitey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, basically, I make a motion to not accept the tentative agreement with the union.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that.
Motion is made by Counselor Whitey, seconded by Counselor Contreras to not accept the tentative agreement. Obviously, there's, discussion was had in closed session, so we'll turn 12 vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13. Call for an adjournment to Tuesday, March 6th.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, March 6th at 7:00 PM.
Is it Wednesday, March 6th?
The presidential nominating primary.
Okay, well, my agenda was wrong. Motion by Mr. Lara to adjourn to Wednesday, March 6th, 7:00 PM, seconded by Mr. Delaney. So the audience at home knows, it's Wednesday. We did move that date. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned.